...
We just begin the life of the United States of America and to do the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, very good. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda, Stephen?
I'll move.
Second.
Thank you very much. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much for the adoption of the agenda. Next item is public comments and requests. I do not have any slips here for public comment, but there are two items, I think, Hunter, that you are going to summarize.
Yes. Two letters to the school board. Actually, the first was to Dr. Jones and into the police department. It's from Mr. Dave Rifkin, and he is writing to communicate how pleased he is with the stop-arm cameras in operation on the school buses. And so some good feedback there from him. And the second public comment is from one of our staff, Mr. Joel Block, who's the FCCA Vice President and the Peak Vice Chair. He writes, "Dear School Board, a question has been floating around the district. Would you rather have Arlington salaries or smaller class sizes?" And he said, "For many teachers I've spoken to, the answer is yes. We would like to have both the Arlington salary scale and the smaller class sizes."
Check.
No surprise there.
Thank you very much for that. Recognitions and reports, NEA week.
Excuse me, Ms. Carney. Could you please use your microphone?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Dr. Jones, is this yours, NEA week?
No, this is Amanda. I bring you greetings and information from the Falls Church City Education Association this evening to remind you that next week, beginning Monday, is American Education Week. Each year, this is a great opportunity to celebrate public education and honor the individuals who are making a difference and ensuring that every child receives a quality education. The week-long celebration features a special observation each day of the week. Tuesday, November 19th, recognizes educational support professionals. The Falls Church City -- pardon me. In an effort to recognize these wonderful FCCPS support professionals, the Falls Church City Education Association organized a letter-writing campaign. If my numbers are correct, Ms. Cadell received approximately 80-plus thank-you notes to share with the board. It's quite a thick stack. These notes and letters have been, or will be, given to the individuals to show our support for their amazing efforts each day. Each bus driver, paraprofessional, custodian, secretary, chef, and specialist is an integral part of the FCCPS family. We extend a huge thank you to these amazing men and women. We could not do each day what we do without them. Additionally, as we grow ever closer to the budget season, please remember that these individuals are important and deserve equal consideration when compensation and benefits are considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Latch.
Sorry to overwhelm your email box, but they are important.
And there are a lot of them. There are a lot of them. Thanks very much for that. Next item is item seven, the consent agenda. Now, did we have a...
Yes.
An epiphany? That said, we could waive reading the consent agenda and simply take a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Do we have such a motion?
Still moved. Second.
Thank you very much. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
And are there any opposed? All right, very good. The consent agenda has been approved. Isn't that painless? Moving on to business action information, item 8.01, approval of second reading and adoption of school board policies. Do I turn that over to you, Dr. Jones, or do I turn that over to you, Tom?
Mr. Horn.
Okay. If I need to use a microphone, I will. If I can.
Speak loudly, tell the world with your voice.
The long list of policies before you was reviewed at the October meeting. There are two that were revised. One editorial to fix a split infinitive, and I used the English teachers to do that for us. And the second was to remove the existing language from the Procedure for Adjusting Grievances for Professional Staff as a result of the change in Virginia Code. And we've replaced all of that language with the simple reference to the Virginia Code. And the specific mechanics of the Virginia Code will be included in the regulation that goes along with that policy.
Okay. Thank you very much. Rather than asking Mr. Horn to go through these individually, since we've had first reading of them, let me just simply ask the board members in our student liaison, does anyone have specific questions about any of the policies or can we simply move to adopt?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
In 5.12, well, these are more -- pardon me. These are more operational, and so I wonder whether we should defer them rather than -- because they have to do with whether, for example, in 5.44, whether the board has actually appointed a review team or a team chair, which is, this is for charter schools. We adopted the policy like 10 or more years ago initially, and now we're updating it. And the policy calls for having a team to review applications and a chair to receive the initial application. We've indicated in the regulation that the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum should receive the application. Is that -- should we indicate that that's the chair of the person we're designating as the chair? Anyway, those...
This is our operational side, yes, you're right.
Yeah. If you want to defer questions like that, I'd be happy to defer them and pick them up at a conditional time.
That would be great, Mr. Sharp. Yeah, let's go ahead and adopt these and approve them. If you have questions about how we make them come alive in our division, if you would please send those questions to Dr. Jones. She'll collect them up, and then we'll put on a future agenda or somehow communicate with the board what those things are. Does that work?
That's great. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Now, is there a motion, please, to approve second reading of these policies?
I'll move that the school board approves second reading and adoption of school board policies. 3.7, 4.23, 4.38, 5.44, 6.35, 6.4, 8.1, 8.25, 8.30, 8.35, 8.36, 8.5, 8.56, 8.8, 9.17, 9.21, 9.3, 9.34, and 9.38.
Thank you, Mr. Cheney. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, very good. Thanks so much. Next item, 8.02, is the Quarterly Budget Report for the Service and Community Service Funds. Are the Food Service and Community Service Funds, yes?
Yes. Yes. In a format similar to that, that we gave to the operating budget last month, provided a report for both the Food Service and Community Service Funds. I am very pleased to report that the Food Service Fund is, at this point, doing very, very well. Our food sales are right on track of where we anticipated they would be. There's a lot of positive feedback about the program in general. And actually, received our first federal reimbursement yesterday for the month of September. And it was actually higher than what I had anticipated, so we may see a little extra federal reimbursement money there. Food sales, especially at Mount Daniel and George Mason, are extremely robust. And as the board make is aware, we're planning on working on opening a second line at TJ to hopefully increase the sales there, although there and at Mary Ellen Henderson, they're fine as well. At this point, given what we've collected and anticipate to collect through the end of the year and what we've spent and looking at the salaries and the food costs through the end of the year, we're anticipating that the food service program will end the year to the good in, to about $24,000.
Okay. Any thoughts or questions? Before you move on to the next one, I just wanted to give a change. I just simply want to recognize Mr. Kane and his staff for the great, great work that they do year in and year out. I think this is, I mean, the action they took to shift last year mid-year and the changes this year. And aside from the community, I hear only good things about the food this year. And last year, that was not the case at this point in the year. So congratulations to him and to all his students. I think they're just awesome.
And thank you for acknowledging Mr. Kane, because he was really, really key behind all of this. He's honestly, you know, flagged, you know, the issue early and has spent probably a good, solid nine months of planning to get us to where we are. And it really, really pays off. It is paying off. In terms of the Community Service Fund, again, with monies that we have collected and anticipate to collect and what's been spent and future projections for what we're going to spend, we are currently predicting between $92,000 and $93,000 to the good. This is primarily profit from the daycare program, but it also represents rental income as well. And so this is tracking along very nicely and in concert with the experience of previous years.
Any questions? I just have one question.
Yes.
One thing that stuck out to me was we're looking at a deficit of $215,000 plus dollars in user fees. What is that about?
That actually is the daycare.
That's just fewer daycare fees than we had budgeted.
Collected. And likewise, on the spending side, it would be primarily time card wages, you know, those sorts of things.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Next item is approval of utilizing the current FY14 budget savings. Dr. Jones, is that to you?
Part of that is to me, actually. And Hunter, we'll walk you through it. This is the same chart you saw at our school board meeting last month. And basically, what we're looking at right now is requesting to be able to use some of the budget savings that we have from this school year to help fill some gaps and some holes. And we have a payroll specialist that you will see listed on here, so it's the same format you saw last month. And this is really a result of what's happening, a tremendous amount of work with VRS. And in our payroll office right now, you know, we've had Sarah Blake for eons, like 20 years. And she's, you know, wonderful, but she's still one person. And we had one person when we had 1,000 students or 200 employees. And so she's reached the point now, and Sarah says, "Wow, it's too much. We're wanting to add another position to really help with that." And part of what's happening with VRS is that we now have people who are on VRS-1 who pay, you know, their small percentage than people who are on VRS-1 who are new to our division that are on 5%. We have VRS-2, and then we also have the hybrid VRS that takes, will go into effect January 2014. And I'll be very honest, we're not real sure what it is, and we're trying to find all the answers because the hybrid is really confusing as far as what our responsibilities are, how we have to educate our staff. And we're just finding, we need another person in payroll. The other thing that is not reflected on here, but I'm going to request it tonight, and then, you know, the school board can make the decision whether to fund it or not. And I talked to Susan about this yesterday in the meeting that I was in at TJ today. They are really finding it a challenge at TJ with the growth. We know that next year, we have to add another assistant principal there. There are over 700 students. It's a multi, you know, tall building. It's difficult to even be everywhere you need to be. And between now and the end of the year, what we would like to do is add an interim assistant principal that just, and they're kind of rent-a-principals. Usually, they're retired from Fairfax or somewhere else, very experienced. Most of them that would kind of fall into that pool usually come from schools that were bigger. But we actually think it would be really great. And we talked to Bob and Mary Kay today, and they're like, "Oh, please request." Because we feel like just having that extra body there. And the cost is about right around $40,000 between now and the end of the year, because you're not paying for summer. You're not, it's only, you know, during the rest of the school year, and Ron will stop way through, so.
And benefits are minimal.
Right. So we would like to be able to pose for an interim to see if we could get somebody to help them get through the rest of the year and also just to really have somebody there to have that extra person planning that has a lot of experience with bigger buildings, which I think would be great. So that would be the second request, along with payroll specialists.
Thoughts, questions?
I think that's a great idea.
Before we go to the individuals to add, could I ask about the numbers here of the budget? There appear to be some differences between this set out and the set out that we saw in an earlier month where state sales tax was more rosier picture than it is at the moment. The other funding in revenue also is substantially different. Can you -- am I mistaken?
You are not mistaken, Mr. Sharp. Most of the change, however, between last month and this month, because I did take the opportunity to, you know, to update the numbers, given the fact that two more payrolls were run and number of purchase orders, you know, had come in from the previous month. I went ahead and updated this through the end of October. The report you saw last month was as of the end of September. The sales tax is, at this point, given what we've collected in the months of September and October, we're anticipating about $12,500 less than was budgeted. And that's just based on what, with the percentage of sales tax that has come in historically at that time. Likewise, given the additional students we had above our projections, we're expecting about $44,600 more in basic aid and other state funding. That is driven on a per pupil basis. In terms of the other funding, what this is, the board may recall that there is a line item on the expenditure side called Reserve for Gifts and Grants. There are actually two items. The Reserve for Gifts and Grants gives the board the leeway that should a significant grant come available during the course of the year. And we saw this in previous years in terms of 9/11 funds coming available mid-year after the budget had been passed. There was a sniper grant that was passed, that came our way mid-year after the budget was passed. It basically provides a reserve on the expenditure side to spend any grant monies where if someone were to give a gift to the school board, to expend those funds during the year. Likewise, on the revenue side, there is, under miscellaneous revenue, there is a category for this, to receive those funds. If those weren't there and the grant became available, it would require the board to go back to city council to amend the budget to allow them to receive those funds, to raise the limit. And so what we've done every year is we've left the leeway in here. At this point, we don't anticipate any large gifts. At this point, there are no special grants on the horizon. Therefore, on both the other funding revenue item, we're not anticipating those to come in. The other item, both on the revenue and the expenditure side, is we left placeholders in for sequestration, and that's about $50,000. In the event that the sequestration would be lifted, we would be in receipt of those funds. The same concept applies. So at this point, we're not anticipating getting additional federal funds there. So the 411 to 10 in revenue that we're not anticipating receiving is offset largely at the bottom of the spending by the 333-500 other transfers and reserves that we don't anticipate spending. Those two tend to balance each other off. And like I said, since last month, I went in with the salaries and the payrolls and the benefits and everything else, and reran the projections using the most current data. And actually, the net result was that the projected surplus was actually higher, slightly higher than the previous month.
Thank you. Mr. Sharp, does it answer your question?
So in the spending category, the other transfers, reserves, the projected total spending is $15,000.
Yes.
Should the 333-500 be bracketed? Because when you have the lower amount in salaries and wages, the adjustments...
And actually, you raised a real good question, and I struggled with this a little bit on how to show it. You know, ultimately, in my way of thinking, when you look at the variance after the adjustments, if you look on the revenue, then we would be receiving $379,000 less revenue than we had anticipated. And on the spending side, we are anticipating that $603,000 will not be expended. That was budgeted. And so that you would take the 603 and then subtract the revenue that you would not receive to come out with your balance at the end. So that would actually be the remaining balance.
So it's the 603 that we're...
That we're anticipating as...
That we're not seeing here, is that right? On the expenditure side?
Under total revenue, yes. That would be, at the end of the year, we're anticipating that 603,000, what was budgeted, would be unexpended. That being said, of that amount, $379,000, if you look up at the top under total revenue, at this point, is anticipated not to come in. You subtract, take that negative 379, add it to the 603, and you come out with the 224,300.
I'm sorry, but I don't see 603. I see 640, 6292.
That's all I was supposed to say. Yeah.
Is this the, did we put the current one on here, or?
Is that the problem? Is you made some adjustments to it since then?
Tony, I have made...
Do you what?
I do. I apologize. Yes.
Thank you. I get conceptually what you're saying.
Actually, I made them. I thought I gave them to you.
Oh, maybe they're up here?
Okay. I apologize.
I don't see that number.
Well, that explains that.
Now I see. Now it's so clear.
I am so sorry.
Okay. And it has both positions reflected.
Yes, this has both. I am so sorry.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. But let me check in with Kiran and ask you if you have the correct one. His question was answered. I think John has a question.
Why don't you go on, and I'll try to figure this out.
Yeah, well, to follow on to yours, I mean, Hunter, your explanation seemed to be that the 411 was sort of a placeholder for funding that we thought we might get, but didn't actually have. But it was in our budget, and we're now taking it out. I mean, I'm trying to figure out how we had, you know, that big a number in as other funding that wasn't actually funding. I mean, it seems like a big placeholder.
It is a quite large placeholder. It's about 200 and, I think it might be about $300,000. Because honestly, some of the grants that we've received in the past have been quite significant.
And isn't it even our bus cameras? Isn't that where we go?
If we got a grant for the, you know, if we were the recipients of the grant, that's what that would be. That being said, that's why on the expenditure side, we make sure that we set it aside and do not touch it and do not move it and do nothing with it unless the revenue comes in on the revenue side.
So you need to have a placeholder big enough for anything you might get so you don't have to go back to the city council in effect?
And then that would require two readings, you know, to amend the budget, and that has happened in the past.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Are we going to move on to approve both of these positions?
That's where I was going to circle back around to, is to see whether the board was going to give Tony the authority to hire these positions.
Yeah, let me go back to the, as I recall, there was a fund balance reckoning that we were making in the earlier meeting. And we had a larger amount because of savings and because of unanticipated increased sales tax revenue. And so those numbers looked like we had an increase in money above what we had budgeted that would be available. And we would dip into that unanticipated money to be able to cover some expenses that we had. Is that, is all of that changed under this, under the new time period that we've covered here?
It is not. Mr. Sharp, what you see here, under the revenue side, the use of fund balance, the $486,000, that was what we were anticipating would be available to use, basically, the board's savings account to go ahead and use and program into this year's budget. In addition to this use of fund balance, or you could call it designated fund balance because it was designated to be used this year, there is, serendipitously enough, approximately $480,000, about the same amount, that is currently undesignedated. And in accordance with the fund balance policy that the school board passed last year, that $480,000 is to be designated for use in the upcoming budget, predominantly to fund a contingency reserve, the funding source of the contingency reserve. So in some regards, the 480 that is, at this point, undesignedated or unobligated at this point, actually is because it's earmarked for using the FY15 budget. What you see on the piece of paper before you reflects only that portion of the fund balance that was plugged into this year's budget.
Okay, so then the increase in salaries and benefits for these two positions is coming from what source?
It would be coming from, at this point, both salaries and wages and benefits. As you can see, in the middle column, the variance from the budget. At this point, we're anticipating that approximately $78,000, $77,000, $765 in salaries will be unspent and about $40,000 in benefits will be unspent, which would leave enough money to fund these two positions for the remainder of the year. So they would actually come from the categories in which they were budgeted and intended to be used.
Okay, well, that's even better than last month. Better than I recall. And, you know, the older I get, the better I was. The, this means then that the amount that we're intending to spend is within the anticipated budget.
Yes.
And not within unanticipated savings or unanticipated revenue.
Or contingency.
Or contingency.
Right, we're not touching the contingency. Right. That's correct. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions about these two positions?
I do.
Yes, sir.
So the payroll specialist, does that report to you?
It does, sir.
Okay. So, I mean, I guess my only concern is, I know we had talked about some positional help possibly for the superintendent. I mean, I guess my question is, do you feel like this is where we need, our most important need is in terms of assessing and trying to put staff in at this time? I know that we've had, you know, some other issues that we've talked about, but it's your opinion that this is absolutely the most pressing need is the payroll specialist?
I do think that it is, and I think we're concerned we're going to end up missing payroll because it is that difficult. Because we are one of the, again, few divisions that pay people every two weeks. You know, when you look at like Fairfax, and they get paid nine times a year. But that's kind of a benefit for our staff to get paid every two weeks, and we want to stay committed to that. But as you grow, it gets harder and harder, and it's a real challenge right now.
Well, is that, I mean, the reason I ask that is that, I mean, is it the type of thing that our staff might be willing to adjust in regards to what they do there if it's going to basically, you know, impinge on the ability to do things like try to give them better raises and things like this? I mean, I'm just a little concerned. I know what you're saying, that we have had one payroll specialist in the future. We've also had tremendous increases in technology and how payroll is processed and even the potential for outsourcing this. I mean, I just, I just want to make sure that you're comfortable. I mean, obviously, it'd be pretty difficult for you to change your tack right now in the middle of this meeting, but it's a little, I'm just a little concerned anytime we're putting money somewhere that's not in the classroom, considering everything we've talked about tonight.
And I would think that that's probably, I mean, I told central office for, this is the third year, that we're not adding staff here, and we've tried to put everything in the classroom, but you reached that point where you've kind of stretched everybody enough. And I would say that position probably more than, more than the principal one, to be honest with you, is really needed in central. I think both the assistant superintendents would probably agree with that. And actually, came and sat down with me and said, "Okay." And really had kind of that conversation about this. about this position, because we really had that plugged into FY fifteen budget, but we know that it's, it's just become such a challenge for us. We're not keeping up.
And, you know, and honestly, in, in terms of not only, you know, the increased number, numbers of staff, you know, that we have, uh, you know, increased numbers of paychecks, you know, are, are, you know, are one thing, because, you know, you put somebody on a salary, but it means increased numbers of timesheets that need to be processed. It's increased numbers of staff who are out on new types of leave that have been added over the last twenty-two years.
I understand that complexity's changed. I, I get it.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that we're clear. This is a, whatever we're spending on salaries outside.
In, in terms of technology, you know, yes, technology is wonderful, but it also means that the state of Virginia and the federal government expect more data at a much finer level than they ever have before because, because of the technology.
Okay, and so that was going to, that's a good segue. Thank you.
Yes.
For what, you know, I think, again, justifying this position, will this person, will this position, I'm assuming it's not a person, or we're just going out with an open hire?
It'll be posted.
Yeah. So, will this position be doing some things, I mean, and again, from justification standpoint that are sort of, I mean, if, if it's just processing paperwork versus helping with overall budget issues? I mean, just the way it's advertised or, or titled here, payroll specialist two, what you're describing things, because I know we task you with insane amounts of financial work. Is this something that's considered, or, you know, can you give me an idea what the person will be doing, other than...
Actually, what I'm anticipating, I've talked with Ms. High and, and Dr. Jones about this, is that this person would, uh, be doing more of the day-to-day, fairly lower-level payroll work, which would then free our current payroll specialist up to, uh, do, uh, higher-level tasks like maintaining the tax tables, the, um, the employee benefits codes, what's taxable, what's not in, in munis, who's basically doing what the assistant financial, uh, CFO is doing over on the city side.
Gotcha.
Um, in addition to this, you know, to, to, to lay it all out there, um, what this, this will allow in my office, and again, I've, I've spoken with, with both my colleagues here about this, uh, to address, um, three, three pressing items, and one is segregation of duties. We've been cited by our auditors, and it, and as Dr. Jones points out, this is, this is fairly common in small organizations where, you know, currently our payroll specialists can run an entire payroll from start to finish, and, um, this would provide segregation of duties not only there, but in other areas. Um, it would be balancing workload, because the workload really on one person has, has really become very, you know, very unmanageable. And the third benefit that we're looking at is, frankly, to provide backup and cross-training. Uh, if our payroll specialists were to walk out the door tomorrow...
We'd have a nightmare.
We would have a big night, nightmare. And, and frankly, we, we honestly have tried to work on the cross-training piece. We just don't have enough time, because we're doing our jobs day-to-day, to show somebody else how we're doing, and then to let them do it, and if we do, they don't have an opportunity to basically use those skills until maybe several months later, then you've forgotten.
I, that sounds great. I just wanted to make sure we justified anytime, like I said, it's already, I would call it extraordinary when we're spending money outside of the typical budget cycle, and we're doing it on a position outside of the classroom. I think we should, it sounds like it's justified, I just want to make sure we get that out there for the record. Okay? Thanks.
Um, I do have a question, which is, um, how, not on the assistant principal, but for this payroll specialist, how does this intersect with the operational efficiency study that we're in the midst of, which is, we should be having done soon, which I think should comment on something like this? We don't have enough resource here, or we need different, you know, organization there. And, um, and depending on your answer to that, is this, uh, is this a, a higher position, or can this be a consulting or contract position for this year pending that outcome? I mean, I would hate to hire this person and then have that study come back and say, you have more resources in payroll than you could possibly need, right? So I just want to, I'm just wondering how these...
I think, yeah, I think he's got this this week, I think, and, and we can ask him that direct question tomorrow, but I think we're pretty confident with that piece, because, um, he started on the study this week, and I mean, and he actually told me, now you know, you're probably going to put some of those positions back, because he's looking at our enrollment, and he knows we've consolidated so much on, on the top, um, and, and really, when you think we run double the staff, double the staff the city does, and they have more people in this department, so, yeah.
We, we funded a study.
Yeah.
Because we thought it was important, and I just want to make sure we're not getting ahead of ourselves. I, I want to make sure you guys have what you need, you know, that's always the thing we want to do, I just want to think carefully about the timing of these two things.
Will this study be completed? We'll have it in December. I mean, we could wait another month, but what I can tell you, I think out of everything we've added, this is the one position that is probably, we're in critical need for, and that's why we put it on.
And, and Ms. Carney, I've, I've had, spent a number of hours with, with the team who's doing, doing the study yesterday, and in the interest of full disclosure, you know, I told them about this going, you know, this going to the school board, and, um, Mr. Ratnick told, basically made the same plea to them, and gave them the same explanations, just in terms of, uh, this, this has been, frankly, this has been on the radar screen for a number of, number of years, and I, really, I think the one thing that has tipped the scales more than anything else is, is the VRS, um, is, is trifurcation into, into all these different, different plans.
So, if I may...
Yeah.
If I may, Madam Chair, I mean, the, the thing that you said to me that was sort of of the highest order in terms of the, the language that, for justifying the position is, is the concern of auditors and segregation of duties, um, I mean, just down the street, we just had a, an assistant principal and a financial person indicted for embezzling hundreds of thou, or at least over a hundred thousand dollars. So, I mean, if we do, that's obviously, that, I'm sure that our payroll staff are, is above reproach, but from an auditor's perspective, anytime you could, you know, as we grow, when you have an opportunity to have segregation of duties like that, I can see why an auditor would want that and see it as a major risk factor, so, it sounds like it's justified to me.
Okay. So is there a motion on this?
Chairman, I move that the Falls Church City Public School were approved, utilizing fiscal year savings to hire a payroll specialist and a TJ assistant principal, as shown on the hard copy report provided to us this evening.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, very good. Okay, next, Dr. Jones, a construction update.
Okay. Um, so far TJ, um, we're waiting on clouds in the media center, and, uh, so we can't sign off until the clouds come, and the cloud company has not been very efficient, but they have promised me, and I hope it comes to fruition. They have arrived, um, they're supposed to be installing them tomorrow night, so that they'll be there for our joint meeting, because we want our media center to even believe the clouds. So that's where we are at TJ.
We can have our heads in the clouds on Thursday.
Yeah. Um, at Cherry Street right now, we are just full steam ahead, busy, busy, lots of work going on with Hess, SHW, and city staff. Um, the, the complexity of that project really is, because we're trying to coordinate with the city, and we're looking at the stormwater issues, because it runs under the tennis court, but it coordinates with our property, um, looking at replacement of the tennis courts, so Danny Schlitt has to be at the table talking about that, and one thing we're trying to be very careful about is that they don't look at it as just one large site, although the property shows up like that. We want to make sure that if the tennis courts aren't done, and it's not complete, that doesn't hold up us accessing and moving into Cherry Street. So, we've got a lot of different issues there, and a lot of different people at the table, but the city's working fantastic with us, um, and Jim Snyder's, um, basically working with SHW to take it forward for planning commission and architectural review board, so we're right on track there, and I have not had an update yet as to their move-out date, and that's what I'm eagerly waiting on, because I need them to be out on time, I'm hoping, so that we can start, but that's my biggest concern with Cherry. Um, and then, of course, with Mason, we have on the work plan committee, and since we now know that land will be, um, is going to fall under Falls Church City, we're ready to start the big committee that is, what does a 21st century high school look like? And so, um, we're working on getting all of that put together right now. So that's where we are on those three projects. Mount Daniels RFP is still, obviously, working on the program side.
Yeah. Um, the other thing that I would add to that, just for the board's information, and, and you'll get a chance to meet these people soon, is, um, you might recall some number of years ago, three years ago, four years ago, maybe, the board had representatives from CB Richard Ellis, who are development financial wizards, come and present to us about how the expertise they bring could help us with facilities, projects, and, um, years have rolled by, and a couple of weeks ago, Tony coordinated a meeting with the folks with CBRE, Wyatt, the mayor and the vice mayor, although they did not come, John and myself, um, to reintroduce them and for a wider audience to understand what they might bring to the table. And so I've asked Tony, um, to find a time soon to bring them to meet the entire school board and city council as well. I think, um, for, for me, I've been kind of advocating over the years to have this talent available to us as we move through a really complex project in George Base, and I think Wyatt was convinced, uh, and, and John, in that meeting, I want the full board to have an opportunity to meet these folks and ask some questions, so we're going to coordinate that soon, as we now are past the referendum and ready to start moving ahead as soon as the judges approve the annexation of that land.
We do have a way to get the city staff on that.
Excellent. Um, do you have something?
Yeah, just one question. When you're talking to Jim Snyder, can you ask him about when they need to zone the, the GM campus? Because I asked him, you know, a couple of months ago, and he honestly didn't know. He assumed all the zoning, just went away when it became ours, but then the question is, when it's ours, do, is there a timeframe in which you have to, you know, legally have zoning in place? And he was talking about, you know, should there be a, an, an education special zoning designation, but he was going to check and see if there were any legal, you know, requirements that as of, what, January third, when it's ours?
Yeah.
Something has to be in place within a certain amount of time.
And, um, I, we actually had a meeting, Hunter and I are both at the meeting with city staff on Thursday, um, just trying to figure out, okay, how are we going to move forward, and kind of what Susan was just talking about, because, um, I think the city staff and school staff both recognize we don't have the expertise, um, for us to figure this huge, big project out, so we're hoping that, um, between the two parties, that we'll have that kind of mediator in the center that can help pull school board and city council, and look at all the zoning issues and everything that needs to happen on an expert level. Um, and so we're hoping after Thursday, we'll have a, a better plan to present to you to see if it's satisfactory, to get everybody together.
Okay. Including the legal issues.
Right.
Yeah, I certainly wouldn't encourage us to rush...
Right.
...to zone, since we don't know of that land, what parts we might want zoned in what way. We certainly want to be complying with the law, but we don't need to rush out on the first day and do that without a lot of good advice and counsel and input.
And we do have Walsh Clutchy as well, that we started a relationship with, so, um, the land attorney is in there waiting to answer our hard questions.
Good. They're experts, and it's excellent. Thank you, John. Uh, Tony, do you want to move and talk about the Cherry Street naming process? Very exciting.
Well, we call it Cherry Street, but it's going to need a real name, and so, um, it actually, we just go back to the school board policy and look at how to structure, um, and I basically appoint the committee to the positions that you're seeing listed, it tells me what I have to do, um, and then the committee comes together, and I'm sure that probably electronic generation, when I've done this in the past, you allow everybody in the community to kind of weigh in and suggest names, and this committee is overwhelmed with thousand names, and they have to narrow it down, um, to five, that they will then bring to the school board, and the school board gets to choose from the, the selection of five. That's how our, um, policy is written. So we're just starting that process, and, uh, we just emailed all of the different SAOs, and they found somebody that was interested to, to represent, and then Maeve actually found our students for us, and, and they actually live right there by Cherry, so, which is really fun, fun for them. Um, so we're ready to start that process, so, um, you'll see probably something in morning announcements before, within the next week or so, um, so that we can get the building named.
Great. Very exciting. I remember when they need Marilyn Henderson. You guys probably really remember it, right?
We do.
Because you're a part of that.
A four-three vote?
Yeah.
And Dr. Jones, I just want to say thank you for reaching out to me to have the students on the committee. That's something that I definitely want to see more of, more student voice on our various school board committees, so I really appreciate that.
All right, the next item is, uh, we have actually three items that I think all fall into Mr. Sharp's bucket. If I could just turn it over to him, uh, approval of the testing resolution that was presented to us by the VSBA, um, and then some items related to the legislative package and the, and the VSBA convention coming up. So, Mr. Sharp, shall I just turn it over to you to move us through those three items?
Uh, so as not to confuse myself, I hope, um, let me take them one at a time.
Please.
The, uh, the resolution we saw previously in very similar form, uh, there are, um, I think just, there's, there's mainly just one change, and that has to do with a, a comment from a PTA leader, uh, and I'm trying to find exactly where that is. and then VAS also was a supportive, uh, that, that is, the Association of Superintendents was a supportive, um, character in, in, uh, pushing this issue. Both, uh, both candidates for governor also have sort of taken up this issue, and now that, that's, uh, that election's decided. I think we, we definitely will see some action on this, uh, testing issue in the General Assembly, uh, but the, uh, the concern that was raised by the, um, by the parent was that this resolution should continue to express a desire to have accountability, uh, on the part of, um, the schools for good results with, with academic performance. And, uh, it isn't the, uh, the intent of this resolution to, um, do away with testing altogether, it's to shift the focus from what may be, uh, tests that are too, um, simple in their design, to, based on rote memory, and not so much on, on problem solving and on, uh, writing ability, uh, on things that, that will really prepare a student for, for a career after high school and for, for college. And so, um, what's, uh, what's, what's being requested here is hopefully something that, um, not only we're advocating at the state level, but we're trying to implement at our level, to the extent we can. So that's, that's the, uh, the testing, and as I said, um, there is that, there is that language incorporated now in here, uh, that does emphasize that we do want to continue to have accountability, uh, as part of, part of our, um, system going forward. We're, we're not trying to, to do away with the accountability.
Thank you. Are there any questions about this? If not, I'll ask if there's a motion to approve the resolution.
Could I just?
Yes.
Uh, just going over, I think there, there's some high stakes, it's sometimes hyphenated, sometimes it isn't, just going over to make sure that's, uh, cleared up.
Thanks. Is there a motion?
I'm anticipating you'd prefer hyphens.
I, I love hyphens.
High, high quality in there, also has hyphen, has a hyphen.
And, uh, overreliance, I think, would be hyphenated, too.
We need a hyphen check.
We're...
That's why I'm, I'm just throwing it out there. You don't, you don't have to consistently have a hyphen in every instance, it depends on how it's being...
Whether it's a descriptive...
Yeah.
I agree.
Attorney, attorney. I love it.
Well, I saw Miss trauma.
That's where they call you Kama Kama. That's where they call you Kamala Khanji.
Oh, my gosh.
Forgive my loss of memory here for a minute, but the whereas clause in which there was a change, that the issue of accountability is enhanced, is one that begins, whereas we believe that a balanced system of assessments. And you'll see that is about two-thirds of the way down the first page. Okay? And the words on the third line of that whereas clause dealing with accountability were added to make sure that was reflected in there. So that's probably the best clause reflecting our value with regard to what kind of system of assessments we prefer to see be the predominant system. And shifting away from the one that we currently have. So if that's reflective of the board's value in this case, I'd suggest moving ahead, that all the rest of it you had seen before.
Just ask a quick question. When you say that this was suggested by a PTA member, a Falls Church City PTA member?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Karen, do you want to make a motion?
Go ahead. I'm sure.
Yeah, I just want, I want to say, I think this is great in that we're moving in the right direction, but I'd just like to push this board to look for more aggressive reforms. I think I've made it very clear that I'm not in favor of the SOLs at all or any of these high-stakes tests. And I think that sentiment is shared with the entire student population.
And their parents. Thank you. And I would encourage you to, this for the student population, to make that known to people beyond this board, by which I mean to say the State Department of Education, your General Assemblymen. I think to hear from students, their perspectives on this would be important. Is there anything else? Is there a motion? I feel like you've asked it a bunch of times.
A move that the board approved this resolution as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Is there a second for that motion?
A second.
Pardon me, with edits to cover the comments as indicated by Mr. Castillo.
Thank you. And Ms. Highland.
And Ms. Highland.
Mr. Rasmussen has a second on that motion. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And are there any opposed? All right, very good. Mr. Sharp, V S B A Delegate Assembly Proposed Actions 2014?
Okay, there are 14 items.
This was a robust list.
Various school boards around the state have requested that V S B A bring to the General Assembly for either an entirely new legislative position or one that amends an earlier legislative position by the V S B A. I hope you've had a chance to look at these. These are ones that will be brought before the Delegate Assembly next, not this coming Thursday, but the Thursday following. And I would very much appreciate guidance from the board as to how to deal with these questions. I think they all have merit. Four of them actually come from us, the ones dealing with technology and the ones dealing with camera enforcement of school bus passing problem, and also with electronic meetings. So those four, I think we've dealt with in some detail previously. The others, you'll, the very top of the list, you'll see a recommendation concerning A through F testing, and the V S B A is opposed. So many of these are familiar, and they'll have parallels in our legislative package from previous years. If anybody has questions, please let me know.
Any questions, John?
I don't know if you're the right one to ask, but for number 12 on page six, where it's the 21st century communication for school boards, the underline at the end of the first paragraph, that's an addition?
Mr. Sharp.
I'm only confused because earlier it says where a quorum of a public body is physically assembled at one location, and basically other people can phone in, but then it looks like they're adding, a quorum can be electronic, which I don't understand.
No, I think that's already in the statute. I think that's an error in the way they've, the way they've set this out. And I'm sorry, I took this directly from the pages of the book that's going before the Delegate Assembly.
Okay, so the idea is you still need a physical quorum, but others can phone in, video in, Skype in, whatever.
That is the understanding that there must be a quorum at the site of the members of that board, and the only, those participating remotely would have to be above the quorum number.
Right. Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'm able to resist every known possible way of making comments on that.
Thank you. Are there any other questions about this? Do people on the board feel like they had a chance to look at it and study it and are ready to take action on it?
No. So I actually have, but I did want to pose a question, and that is, this is going, this is for the November 24th meeting, correct? Am I?
Yes.
Okay. My only question is?
Well, it's the 21st.
First.
Twenty-first.
Okay.
The 21st.
So do we know yet how many of our newly, if any of our newly elected school board members are going to be able to attend that? I know that we have the, that they have the first school board orientation one, I guess, in January, February. Are they not eligible to go? Or they?
It's not that they were actually invited to go, but none of them were able to go.
Okay. That's my only question. That's all.
Yeah, they were invited. Okay. So let's see if we can get a motion on this. If people are not comfortable, they know enough, they can vote no, and we'll see what we do, but let's try.
I'm going to make a motion. The Falls Church School Board supports all proposed new and amended legislative positions as presented, as prepared for presentation to the 2014 V S B A Delegate Assembly.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Highland. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, very good. Thank you for that. And Karen, I'm going to let you roll right on to our draft legislative package for 2014. And this is just for information. We won't be taking a vote on this tonight. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
These are positions that we would be advocating at the General Assembly along with V S B A in many cases, but whether V S B A chooses to go along with these or not, we would be trying to push these forward. And many of these reflect prior year positions, certainly the cost of competing, the virtual schools, and the local control of the calendar. And then others are somewhat newer that are responding to recent legislation, like the A through F grading system, the Opportunity Education Institution. And those are reflecting positions that we've taken on those issues. The reason I wanted to make sure that we had this parallel in front of us was to see some of the things that we've taken position on in the past, have a chance to review, but also to ask, are there some new areas that we should be aware of? I think there may be some things that come before the Delegate Assembly that are brought up from the floor, and then there may be some new things by the time we get to January that we should consider adding in here. One that I'll just mention is one that Fairfax County, I think, will push since their school board said that they would, and that's taxing authority for school boards, which, as I understand, it would take a constitutional amendment to implement. So it would be a rather long process to get that accomplished. And even if accomplished, it may turn out to be a local option sort of thing, where the state would say, yes, localities can have a school board that has taxing authority, but it'll be up to the locality to have a referendum and decide the board should have such authority. And so that would be another, you know, there might be a couple of votes by the General Assembly, a statewide referendum, and then local referenda to go along with it. But it is an important issue, and over the course of a four-year plan or, you know, some kind of projection of where our enrollment is going, where our construction is likely to have to be funded, maybe it doesn't look so far away.
So I guess what I would say is if everybody would take a look at this, if you have other ideas, please forward them to Karen. And then I expect it will be at the December meeting that you'll bring a second version of this back for us to approve that'll have the V S B A things we approved and these things and other things that people might want to present.
Yeah, and we received, I think, this evening, all of you probably received the letter from Arlington inviting each of us to the Legislative Breakfast on December the 4th. And we usually have our draft legislative package at that time at least to distribute to everybody. So it would look somewhat like this with any things I hear about in the meantime from you.
Yeah.
When does the session start?
Well, first week in January.
First week?
Yeah.
Is there, would it be terrible to bump this to January only? I mean, the thing that I liked about this the first time I came on the board is I learned more about sort of issues and how it played in that one session. If we've sort of already moved most of these things as a board, it may sort of just kind of kick the can on the members that are coming on board. That's why, to me, it would make sense, because it's really, let's face it, it's probably a foregone conclusion that this board's going to support these positions, okay? But I think there would be great value in them sort of understanding them. It's, and I don't know that they'll get that. I mean, it's a full year lost if we sort of vote on it in December and then, so just an idea.
I don't know what the implications are of doing it in December versus January. Maybe even Lilac and Tony can chat about that and come back and let us know. I certainly don't want to be behind the eight ball because a lot of these issues are important statewide issues that we've been talking about, but, you know, at the same time, we will have new members on the board, so.
I mean, none of these things, the letters, I mean, because the first couple of weeks of session, they're just calendaring, really. I mean, it's not until they have, I mean, it's really not until the very end that everything starts to move, so I would think. I mean, get the advice, but I.
Right. Yeah, the thing I would say is I think looking at our January meeting agenda, we have approval of the CIP and the presentation of the superintendent's budget, so I'm not sure that, given those priority agenda items, that there'll be much time for that, frankly. So if you'll come back to it.
For new items, the entry of bills at the General Assembly is somewhat important, and that's the first week in December. So if there are really new things that someone would have to introduce, say, a new bill, that's the best time to do it. It's not the only time that it can be introduced. It can be, they can come in later and then come in by amendment, you know, at the 11th hour, you know, before the, before the end of the General Assembly. But the best time for new things to come in is in early December. Last year, you may recall, and I think it was a put-on-board docs, anyway, there was a letter that Meredith Conley produced about A through F grading. The date that that appeared in the news press was January 24th, and it was, you know, after we had acted upon our legislative package. So yes, this should come back to the new board for some review and salute, or an opportunity to make additions if they choose to do so. So that would be my anticipated procedure to reconnect with them in January, make sure that they're on board with these things.
I guess there's also no reason why, Karen, you can't check with them right now. Send this to them in draft form and along with kind of process and ask for their feedback or offer to have a conversation or, you know, whatever in order to collect their thinking. Some of them, you know, Lawrence Webb, who's been on the school board before at the state level, may be more familiar and have ideas, and the others may need a little bit of coaching or education from you before, but why not reach out to them? We're reaching out to them on a lot of other things, so.
Council members as well, and I suggest perhaps on the taxing issue or others.
Yeah, there's a thing. All right. Thank you very much, Karen. And everybody, please remember to get back to Karen with ideas that she has so she can do this. All right, Superintendent's report.
Okay, I just have a couple of items. On the efficiency study, it's well underway, and they're actually on-site with us this week and spent time meeting with all of our directors. And they've been out at schools today, they'll be out at schools tomorrow, looking at all of the different operational aspects of the divisions, so we're really excited to have them here. And also for Lego League, there was a huge Lego League competition at MEH this weekend, and it's really fun to see the robotics that we've had at GM that's been so strong start to really filter down, and it's really at all levels now, except Mount Daniel, and that'll be our next one. We'd like to see our littlest ones get involved. So, and special thanks to Don Prost and Cricket Moore, because they really do a tremendous amount of work for us to really support robotics. And we were there today with Exon Noble, who donated $1,000 to the high school team. So that's just the work of a lot of people, a volunteer effort. Also, our school tours are tomorrow, and so I know we always have a huge audience that watch these meetings, so maybe someone watching will want to come and join us. But we have tried to open the door through the community visioning, emailing everybody that was there this summer that's been participating, trying to get the word out that we want people to be able to see what's really going on inside our schools. And our last school tour was excellent. I mean, it was just informational, and everybody enjoyed it. I'm hoping we'll have a good turnout tomorrow. And we tour from 8:00 to 12:00 and start at George Mason. We also tomorrow night have all things infrastructure, which is part of our Technology Advisory Committee, and that's a lot of our community members who work in the technology industry are gathering around the table with our staff and also our specialty contracted staff with Cisco and Dell engineers, and just to really talk about what our infrastructure looks like, where we want to be with infrastructure, and then hearing from some professionals in the field to see if they have some contributions of what they see on the horizons with technology. And it's a really diverse group. They come from just all types of backgrounds, so that should be a lot of fun. School bus cameras, I usually get a couple of emails from you, everybody wants the data, data, data. And I can tell you, I keep, I drive them crazy, I really am. But I think right now what's happening is they're trying to make sure the cameras are in focus, and so they've had the technicians out and, you know, fixing some little things. They're very slow at the beginning to be very careful about the tickets that are issued. And I had a meeting with the city police staff today, and they're figuring out on their end what all it takes and the sort of reviewing that goes on. But we did agree today with ATS to please send a report every Friday. So we're going to see if on Friday we can get a consistent data report weekly, so, because I know everyone wants to know. And the other question I know Mr. Sharp has asked is, where are the infractions? Once we know how many, do we have certain pockets in town where, you know, we have more than others? So I am staying on that. We, I was also invited to visit the Gifted Committee last night, which was great, and the school board's work plan was really the topic of conversation, that's why they wanted me to come, about how in the world are we going to incorporate the arts into Gifted. And CTE was even, I think, even more outside maybe of a discussion that they really haven't had before, but it was a really good meeting, and I think everybody knows there are ways for us to really explore that and really be able to recognize some of our really talented kids in the school division. And that was a great discussion, so thanks to Lisa for inviting me there. And I think that's enough. That's it. We're just busy, 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 so I can go on.
Okay. Thanks. Now it's time for us to do the same, and I will start on the left-hand side of the dais with Ms. Curtin.
So I am going on the school tour tomorrow, and I'm very excited. That's been something I've been trying to do since I joined the board, and I'm really excited to see Mount Daniel, TJ, and MEH especially, so I can get a better sense of, you know, what's going on with those schools and get in touch with those students. you know, what's going on with those schools and get in touch with those students and hopefully continue to do that throughout this year. And then also I would just like to say that the support staff is key and that, just echo what Ms. Lanchard said, that's very important, it's very important to the students and everybody who works in the school division, so, that's all.
Thanks very much, Mr. Rasnik.
I just want to congratulate all of our incumbent school board members who were re-elected and congratulate the newly elected members and also want to congratulate the whole city on the overwhelming support for the sale of the water system, which I think is gonna have a, a great impact on us as a community and specifically on the school system. So, anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Hyland.
I attended the athletic boosters meeting last night and just a reminder that a couple of our tall sports are in the playoffs right now, cross-country and football are both still in the playoffs. And also, everyone might want to consider going to see Oklahoma and a couple of Castillo kids are in it, and A Miller, as well as a bunch of other kids in there. No, no, no. But I'm, I'm very excited to see it. It's Thursday, Friday and Saturday.
Thank you. Mr. Castillo.
By the way, if anybody has a pair of size eleven or bigger cowboy boots for George tomorrow for the show, please let me know right away. I, I- Okay.
We borrowed his motorcycle boots before.
Okay, I've got, I've got somebody's Sunday Best cowboy boots, but I really don't want to use those unless it's a last resort, but. I tried to go to the G T meeting last night and I got there right as it was winding up because I was coming back from, from teaching my own course. Looking forward to the technology group, the initial technology meeting, seeing some of the things that were going on in the schools was, was very well attended and very interesting. There's a lot of enthusiasm among the teachers. Yeah, and come see Oklahoma, probably not on, opening night might be a little rough for Will, I don't know, we'll see. But I'll just keep it moving to the right.
Yes, Ms. Lawrence.
Just a couple of things, the, the meeting with C B R E was fascinating. I mean, I wish the city had known that groups like this existed when they were doing city center years ago because the kind of advice they give, you know, not, not just to schools is amazing, so I hope they can come in here fairly quickly. I went to the W A B meeting a couple of weeks ago, they apparently hadn't met in three years, so it seems like it's a group that is trying to start coming together more and I know Susan's offered to host a meeting here, so there's just a lot of people, including some from Maryland, who were sort of just coming together to complain about common problems and, you know, when I heard that Prince William's average increase in enrollment equaled our total enrollment, it just sort of put everything in perspective when they said that, you know, one year we get twenty-five-hundred new students and it's just a little, a little different. On the, on the bus cameras is interesting, about a week after we started, Supervisor Faust from Fairfax introduced a resolution that instructed Fairfax staff to look into glomming on to what we did, specifically cited what we were doing and the R F P and, and everything. And I know the, the day it happened, when it got rolled out, I know, Tony, you said you got a call from Fairfax, but it's getting a lot of attention, including from, you know, their supervisors, which is interesting. And, but I'll be on the school tour tomorrow for about the same reason May, it's good to see schools, only for me, I want to see George Mason since that's the one I haven't had to deal with so far. Thank you.
All right, very good. Mr. Sharp.
Okay, I did attend the joint P T A meeting at which concussion management was discussed and Dr. Jones has reported on that to us and by email, but I'll just say, very, very enlightening, one of the things that I had not realized previously was that the return to learn protocol, which is apparently implemented with every student who has a concussion incident, there is a, what that means is that there is a temporary slowdown in the academic work that is assigned to the, to the recovering student. Now, how that gets implemented may be a bit, a bit dicey, so I, I don't, that, that really wasn't covered in much detail at that, at that session, but I'll just raise the issue as one, as, as another instance where timing within our scheme of doing things is, is interrupted by, by something like this return to learn protocol and we really need to, to figure out how we can adjust our, our testing, our other things that we do to accommodate that kind of, that kind of issue. I believe the number last spring was that sixty-seven of our students suffered concussions in spring, in the spring timeframe. I don't know if all those were sports related, but that's a large number of students at a point where we're attempting to have end-of-course tests, S O L tests, all sorts of things in, you know, are coming into play in that time period and to implement the return to learn protocol must be quite challenging. I also attended the first meeting of the F L E committee and as, as Lisa may point out, there was some very good discussion, a number of new members and some questions asked to be brought back by staff with some answers particularly pertaining to how the, the program is communicated to parents and, and particularly, you know, before the, before the individual student is about to enter a particular topic or, or grade. So I think that's, that's very good, good progress in that committee. I also attended the chamber this morning and they are entering for the holiday period a shop local emphasis. You may have seen their, their website, which they've used from time to time, at shoplocalfc.com that will be revitalized for this holiday season and urge you to go look at it. I will send a reminder to, to Tony as November thirtieth approaches because they, they want to have particularly that Saturday, you know, the Saturday that's the small business Saturday that, that the shop local campaign can be particularly effective. The city, the, the chamber reported on how the city is proposing to upgrade its bus stops and I wondered how that is coordinated, if it needs to be in some way coordinated with our school bus stops. If the city's going to increase the number of bus stops, which they say they, that's part of this, and they're going to have standardized shelters and other things, including trash barrels, will, will that have some impact on where we need to have our bus stop locations? And then, let's point out the luncheon that they're having next week, next Tuesday, is with the Lincoln property folks giving their presentation. Watch night will be continued this year. And if you've seen the picture in morning announcements of the Oklahoma, you know, the promotional that's in there, there must be eight or so males in the picture. When, when my son was doing theater many years ago, they did Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat and among the twelve brothers, he was the only male. And so I just offered that as a benchmark of how far our theater program has gone, how much our enrollment has grown since that time.
Shakespeare and the first.
Just one thing, it's more of a heads up. I, I don't remember, no, if you remember, but about, before I was back on the board, we had come to you as boosters and talked about school naming rights and, and things like that. The, the heads up is the, with Mr. Horn's help, we were negotiating a contract with an outside entity to do the sale of advertising and naming rights, so consistent with that policy, that'll be written into their contract, but you may well be seeing things brought back to you for approval as required by school board policy. But we still do have a loan obligation on the lights of over, over a hundred thousand dollars, even though they're technically paid for. So, stay tuned, you'll probably see me back periodically bringing you, hopefully a lot of naming rights deals when we're done. But it is gonna be, it's gonna first in the sense that it's, not only are we doing it through the boosters, but we're actually going third party, doing the contract with a third party, so we're negotiating, Tom's helping negotiate that deal right now. So it's another unique model that we're applying to finish up that obligation.
Wonderful. Wonderful. I guess that brings it to me and I would simply say a couple of things. First, congratulations to our new colleagues that will be joining us on the school board, I welcome them. We'll be seeing them Thursday night this week at our joint session, they've been invited to attend. I'm also looking forward to working closely with new members of city council that were elected and I congratulate our sheriff and our constitutional officers, Tom Clinton and Kathy Kay for their reelections as well. And just thrilled about the water referendum and as are everyone I've talked to in the city, I think that's great. Thanks, Charlotte, for recognizing our athletes who are in playoffs this year. Our athletic program is so strong, but I particularly want to shout out to the football team because I think it's been a little bit of, of a, of a time since we've had them in the postseason. I think that's great, it's amazing what a new coach can do for you. Wink, wink. Mr. Horn. And I look forward to seeing everybody Thursday night for our joint session with city council to kick off yet another budget year for us here in pasture. Pretty soon it's just gonna be a twelve-month thing. All right, the last thing we have on our agenda this evening is we have four sets of minutes and I'm gonna ask for unanimous consent to approve these minutes. Hearing no objections, so ordered. And I believe there are no materials for board review, so we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. And stay warm. It's cold outside.